This meeting is for the purpose of conducting the business of the township. Observance of the basic rules of debate in any meeting will enhance its effectiveness through ensuring that the discussion is orderly and that every member has the opportunity to speak with the wishes of the majority prevailing. There will be no personal attacks. A respectful attitude towards the public, employees, and colleagues will be maintained. Trustee Johnson, would you give the implications, please?
I'd like to fire heads up there. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for our opportunity to express our freedoms as we vote today. I pray that those leaders would be in your favor. I pray that you would be with those who protect us and give us those freedoms in the world. Be with those families that miss their loved ones from the air of God. Amen.
Please join for the pledge of allegiance.
Let allegiance be the prize of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Jeff Johnson?
Here.
Ross McKee?
Here.
I haven't heard from Julie Berry.
Julie was to be absent today.
We're adoption of the agenda. Regarding the request to add an executive session to discuss an annexation, I'm meeting with the township's attorney regarding that issue.
Are we having a discussion or are you making a motion to adopt the amendment?
I'm making a motion to adopt the agenda regarding the issues with Fred Braxton Memorial that will discuss the May 17th agenda.
Point of order. Are you making a motion to adopt the agenda and then we need a second and then discuss?
I'm making a motion to adopt the agenda, but I'm going through some things that I need to discuss as well. So I was trying to make a motion.
What I had to announce?
Okay. Regarding the issue with Oliver Lawson, this issue has been turned over to the township in short term.
Point of order. According to Robert's Rules, this is not the proper format to address the agenda. That should be in discussion.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as modified, adding National Opioid Settlement Agreement under New Business, which is I?
Is Dr. Oliver on here right now?
It's not on here.
Oh, so we got Ag.
Under New Business?
Under I.
You have the other missions.
That's it.
That's only one, so as is just back.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda by adding National Opioid Settlement Agreement under New Business?
Oh, I can version.
Just a second. Discussion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to amend the amendment. I got, I withdraw the request. I'll let you.
Is there a second?
Here.
Okay. Discussion, okay. Roll call, sorry.
I do have discussion.
Okay, sorry.
On the National Opioid Settlement, I did request this to be placed on the agenda Thursday, and I don't know why it was not. I again believe that the residents, no matter what the subject, should be allowed advanced notice. So, I mean, I approved adding it today, but there was no reason it should have been included on the original one on that. And then the, as I understand, the Bryant Memorial, is that on or not? You're going to address that separately?
It'll be on May 17th. We want to discuss that at the May 17th agenda.
Okay. Well, it would be good to have it today so we don't have any further delays, but that's fine.
Motion to adopt the minutes?
We have to roll call.
Okay. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Ross McKee?
Yes.
In the minutes, we were going to go ahead and wait until we were able to get it.
We'll approve the minutes on May 17th. Public comments are for the public. Trustee, with the interest in responding to any public comment provided this evening, please do so by doing your trustee comments, or we'll comment at the end of the comments. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Please come up to the podium and state your name, address for the record, and if there's any public comments, please come up. You have five minutes.
Jeff, can you turn it on?
Yes, it's on.
My name is Chris Barkis. I'm from Kewal, Ohio, at 103 Swinford Drive in Kewal, Ohio. And I am the founder and director of the Cheeks Network in the North Ohio. It's a non-residential addiction ministry. We've been in for approximately six years in the island, and we have about 54 percent of the guys that come through that, and then they go through that and still successful in doing it. Well, this is just one. And then about 65 percent of them, when they figure this ministry is still successful. So we have a really good success rate. We probably serve over 4,000 people in over six years. So one of our own term goals was to do a residential for men and eventually for women. So we're starting with the men first. We're connected to another group called the Refuge in Cool Office, and the Refuge is very highly renowned in the recovery ministry. And so I just wanted to just really real quick hear about the Refuge and what they do, and this is who we're going to model after. So 66 percent of the people that go to the Refuge do not realize, if you compare that to the standard hair on the outside, it's been pretty much actually worth about that I've ever seen. 80 percent of them are continuing to desire to sustain and reclaim. Doesn't mean they are, but they're still wanting to. So that's a good sign. 91 percent of those people have improved relationships with their families and people who've gotten involved with their families. 92 percent of them still report continuous full-time employment. This is out of our unfulfilled survey over a three-year period. 86 percent of them report housing stability. 94 percent report food security. 87 percent report reliable transportation, and 90 percent of them report not going to the hospital or emergency room for alcohol related problems or drug problems. And 96 percent of them, and this is really good, 96 of them have had no involvement with the justice system in the last few years. They're all, all their numbers are in the 80s and 90s. I thought that was substantial. So it's obviously why we want to model out with them, because we know that it works. It's a faith-based, Christ-centered ministry. It's where we're going to go. We're going to keep it there. We're not going to try to change that. We know that it works, so we're in a state of footwork. And I can spoil you of the numbers that's probably kind of big, too, is the social return on investment. So for every dollar that's spent on the Refuge, $1.80, the dollar and eighty cents goes back to the community. So what that relates to in numbers, the estimated societal cost without the Refuge last year during the survey time was $4.6 million with desert without the Refuge. With Refuge, per person, it was $139,469, and the average cost per person was $53,000 and 87 cents. So if you look at per person without the Refuge is $139,000 for the community. With Refuge is $53,000. So that's 188 percent return on investment per person that's going through the Refuge. Very successful program. We know it's going to work. Tom Thompson is going to come to most of our meetings, obviously start. He's the founder and owner of this. It's been going for 22 years. I don't know many of you guys, it's a bit of a may or mayor, I don't know if you have it on, but very successful. But the end goal is here, is we want it. Return to seeing guys that have potential, that they're on the street, not doing anything with their lives, and they have some potential. We believe in enough to try and pull one. So we're a hand up, so we're not necessarily a hand out or a hand up. And we feel if we can get them under the arc here for that first 30, 45 days and move them on the Refuge from there, we're in a good shape. So our facility is called Besseville Hills Daybreak, and I have some cards here. I'll leave them in the back here when we're done. It's out at the very east side of Lincoln County, right next to Long River Cove, of course, off of River Cove on Felony. And we are hoping to open this year as a 15 and a 15-day facility from that to start off with. And we have enough properties, a 25 acre acre lot, that eventually want to have a wellness facility out there as well. So that's our long-term goal. But that was in the beginning, when we first started the Champions back in 2015, that was our first initial goal, was to have a residential. We wanted to build rapport with the community first. You go, okay, here, I'm going to be on. And that's kind of what I'm here for today, is let you know that we're here. We're here to help you. We're here to be able to hand up for you guys as well, because we know everybody in the addiction business is really, really, really out of our power right now. We're number two in the nation for opioid and fentanyl deaths. Number two. I remember Ohio was number three. So, and we've been number one before in the last. And the fentanyl cases in Lincoln County alone, 2014, we had one. Last year, we had 36 out of 27 buildings. 72 percent died on fentanyl. So fentanyl is in town and it's here to kill, and we're after it. Thank you.
What was your name again, sir? What was your name?
Chris.
Chris, okay.
Last name is Artis.
Can I have one of those for the record?
The card, sir?
If anyone heard you this week.
I have one back here, too. You have a good focus. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
How are y'all doing tonight? Good to meet you. I know I haven't been able to come to these meetings. Thanks, John, for me. I live on Lems Road. Yeah, that road. Just have some questions I don't want to get answered tonight. I want to get a thank you to me, too. So I don't want anybody to take anything personal, because everybody's heard of the things that might really are. But I have a lot of people to talk to, because I am a trustee for the Orchard Glen Lamar Association right over here. And so I'm just going to start with my own questions. Why is the township not enforcing the zoning ordinances in place? Specifically, Section 1015 noise, which states all noises to be moved under control. Also, Section 1018 glare, which states that direct or reflective glare shall not be detectable to any adjoining block or street. What version of Robert's Rules or is this board actually using? Why didn't you include the agenda items Mr. Evans wanted added when requested? Are all trustees equal? They are at Orchard Glen. Where did Ms. McKee come up with Mr. Vance? Was Ms. McKee considering him back in December, and was she worried about him back then? Why didn't Mr. Vance come to a public meeting prior to being hired? Why won't the consultant that Ms. McKee personally hired work with all the trustees? Why would you still hire someone the community in which you represent never wanted him to be hired due to his tarnished past to begin with? You totally disregarded the community and their concerns, let alone paying him $4,250 per month for only eight days of work. That equates to $66.41 an hour if he actually works eight hours each day. You're paying him much more for two days' work per week than most members of this community make, working five days a week, which is very sad looking at his troubling past. Are we still looking for an administrator, or was that all a farce, just to bring Mr. Vance on board? The reason for asking is because he is a consultant only, not an administrator, which this township usually needs. Why didn't you combine meetings last week and publicize the new meeting property? Why does Ms. McKee hold gatherings involving a quorum of trustees where there is discussion planned without complying with the Open Meetings Act? Why is Ms. McKee the only person on the township website with the township phone number by her name, but everyone else has a number to contact them directly? I know her number was there before, I seen it. So I was concerned why it was removed. Does she not want the residents to get ahold of her, unlike the others that do? So no personal attacks, just what I've observed, what I've, and thank goodness for all recorded your meetings, because I'm able to watch them, because I wasn't able to attend. And I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for your time, and hopefully we'll get some of those special attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Uperschon, 484 Trail West. One, this solution on that curve, I guess it's on Palmer Road, yes, people are rock stuff. That is not a township solution. One of the things that happened when Columbia Road teed and ends at Refugee, there was constantly cars going over there. They lit up the start, the stop signs, they lit up the arrow signs with the solar-powered lights. Why can't that be a part, you know, a suggestion for a solution for the township? And then I was looking at, my understanding is May 17th would be a regular township meeting for the public to attend. Is this workshop that you want to replace it with going to be open for citizens? The next thing I wanted to discuss was about adding a proxy policy. Do you have a policy that reviews all the policies every so many years? Every two years, three years, four years, five years, to see what's missing, what's no longer applicable, what needs to be added? The one thing I would say that needs to be added is a disaster plan. And if anyone has been to disaster training, they know the very first step of disaster training is prepare this. Like tonight, with all this rain, it might have flooded, you know? Usually you have it as commander. While that could be, you could say, well, in an area where the rain is possible flooding, the director of road crew will go out and ensure that proper signage is put up and work with the citizens and say, if your road is flooding, give us a call so we can put sides of it. That is just kind of like a suggestion, you know? Everything that goes wrong should have a policy put in that disaster, whether it's electrical outage, computer outage, telephone outage, flooding, plus major disasters, in all geared to what might actually happen here in that township. But again, the policy should be reviewed every so often, and that should also be a policy. Policies are reviewed every so often. Job descriptions reviewed every so often. Two years, three years, four years, five years, are they appropriate? Do we need to amend them? Do we need to add responsibilities? Do we need to take away responsibilities? And then the development team you want to create, to me, the township administrator should also be on that. And then what about citizen representation on that board? So those are some of the things. They're just, you know, looking at the agenda, I wanted to make sure got addressed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be really quick, because I don't really have a whole lot to say. I do want to say thank you to all of you guys. It's like, can you say your name? And I just. Oh, sorry. Actually, thank 75 Trail East. So I just wanted to say thank you, guys, because I know you guys are trying. I think you guys are putting a lot of heat for things that take time, and that needs to be recognized, but it does take time to get things done. I don't want to fault you. I know I also contribute more efforts, but I hope to see you do a great thing, like a great job talking to people. Thank you. The only thing I really would like to see is that, you know, I want to see you guys work together more. I think that would be great to see from all of you. I also really hope that you guys don't do any rezoning or anything like that until after you start the CAC. I don't know if that's anything that's coming up soon before that starts, but that's just something I would like to see. That's the deal, I hope. Keep up the good work, guys. I think that's okay.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rachel, last name at 10141, Tullgate Road. And to what she just said to the CAC, I think anything with rezoning, we should wait until after. I know the current comprehensive plan hasn't been followed, and thank you to the previous administration, including Mr. Johnson, where my life has been. Our house, since we moved in, we have FedEx on one side in our backyard where we can hear the dumping, where we're like, oh, is that a gunshot or a trailer dropping in the middle of the night? Like, that's a fun game that we play, if you guys ever want to come play. But also, we have our neighbors where we asked for it not to be rezoned from agriculture to light manufacture, and you guys did it immediately. They cut down all the trees by XTE, they all do multiple times to get what they were, the zoning plans, what they're planning on putting there, because they cut down their 30-foot barrier and into our property. So now we're missing our trees and our property that we're going to have to deal with. To what he mentioned about the lighting, we have the FedEx light across from 70, I'm on the other side, where it comes into our backyard. Our front yard has the lighting from Amazon, again, across 70 on the other side. And then our neighbors that was just rezoned, they have a bright light that shines into our side neighborhood or our side house. So where I have 14 acres with a farm, raising animals, serving people in this lovely neighborhood, chicken eggs and whatever else, we are surrounded by lights at night and awful sounds throughout the night. Another thing that happened that's really super funding, the only residential house close to FedEx, is that all hours of the night, they get door dash to our house. 11:30, party packs a Taco Bell. I have children. I have multiple children. I have school the next morning. It is not fun. I don't know how many times I've had to go to FedEx and ask them to put it on the border, FedEx building, because they're not looking for that. I have a U-shaped driveway, so they also brush them there. Just this past weekend, while we were setting, planting our garden, I yell at my children that are five and six, feet boarding, to get out of our driveway, because people were speeding in my driveway that aren't supposed to be there. So I want to thank you. May 29th, or no, May 21st, we will officially be here for a year, and it is awful what you guys have done to our property in that amount of time. I hope the lighting situation gets fixed. I can't imagine living in the neighborhood next to FedEx with the noise, when I'm so far away, I can hear it very clearly at my house. And I hope that zoning, since I have spoke to you previously, and you're going to check back, that's never happened, that we can catch up now that I actually am here and have some friends, about my neighbors and what they're doing on their property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more comments?
Yes.
Jeff Hall, 79, River Grove. Just wanted to point out something John pointed out. All these agenda items were like mostly items, art product, philosophy, he was, basically shot up about. And then this future refugee wrote that the roundabout's open to something beside, relatively striking, might should be a turd. That's all.
Is there any other comments? Comments?
Alicia Zacker, 79, Trail East, on August, I'm sorry, April 9th. I sent a couple of emails to the trustees, to you three, based on Mark Evans's remarks about philosophy, transparency, as it relates to the township, and how he was going to be opening on these sort of questions. And I did have some questions that were not public, really, but I didn't really get the answers that I was looking for, or any answers, so I just, I just wanted to send to a public records request and zone for the neighborhood. I cannot help but wonder if the recent remark had the Neekham in mind, the administrative position, which were explaining why you were so difficult to impose to the brand-new administrator. Did you do a records check on Ms. Neekham? I thought you said that you did, but I didn't want to misunderstand what you said. Can you tell me if you did?
Per the president's directive, we're supposed to address you in the trustee comments.
Okay. Either way, I did a couple of checks, and I'm a little surprised at some of the issues that I found on Neekham versus the Ballners. And those are multiple years of poor case. Either way, you made remarks about someone who hasn't lived here. I wouldn't come here if I wasn't hired for a job that, and need attacked by people who have been, it sounds like, based on no criminal charges ever filed. However, if there were, I didn't see him and I looked. I just think that if a fiscal officer doesn't want to work with somebody because they don't like someone else, yet when I do a public records over that township, they don't know who he is, don't have any information, why do I care? I don't care. The man has done a track record for eight years in Pickerton. Eight years, that's a lot of work. And follow if you're here, you'll see it. I don't know what you've done, but I've seen what I've seen, and I haven't seen the same. So why do I care what Neekham wanted or didn't want? But regardless, I ask you for a public records request from the first two April for the recordings that you've been taking. You seem to play the recordings, but yet you don't play all of them. You edit it. I watched you put it on. I watched you put it on. I watched it. I watched you approach two people and talk to them. I watched, well, somebody get up and take a picture of the room. Yet you never start the video until you say, let's start the video. If you represent this township, my township, and you send that recorder home as a trustee, okay, that should be public record. There should be a records retention schedule that should be kept on file. Where are those records given? These are questions that I've asked and sent out an email for, and I'm asking you again on my payboard, and I did send another email today. But if you represent the township as Mark Evans, trustee, you started, you put it on, and then you put it on YouTube, but it's edited. Because last week, when I was sitting over there and some lady started, Linda Corrigan started yelling at somebody else, none of that's on there. But yet, you had it on. You turned the light off. I saw you do it. So I think if you're going to represent the township and turn that recorder on, provide the entire video. That's what you need to do, because you are a representative of this township, and that is representing this township, and that's what you need to do. And we should be able to have that record. So I'm asking formally for the records protection and where that maiden model and serial number and where they're kept at, and all of the records that you have recorded since you took office, because you're not a private citizen anymore. You did it when you were a private citizen, now you're a trustee here, and you're entitled to that. That's all.
Ms. McKee, I have one question regarding her request for contact.
I'm sorry. I didn't want to answer my question, sir. I just want my.
I just want to know where you would like to get in contact to, at your F off, Lick Tarts email, or the Street 31.
Point of order, point of order.
Okay, we'll do.
And I send it to my trustee, president, as well as you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more public comments?
Hi. Thomas Penny, P A I N E, 1113941. Kate Codway, just calling, just came here today to encourage you to follow the Neekham comprehensive plan and zoning. I do not want warehouses. I do not want high-density houses. That's all.
Thank you.
Is there any more?
John Canard, 10785, Palmer Road. I guess I'm back. The meetings I've attended here with the trustee meetings, it seems like everybody talks about the past, condemn the past, trustees, whatever their work, their performance and what have you. But it seems like we have a pretty big balance in our trustee or in our secretary's checkbook. It seems like right now we're trying to empty that, kind of like the White House, break the township. Three million-dollar road project for Refugee Road and actually warehouse, I don't think is really proper, but that's beside the point. Last time I was here, I was questioning job descriptions for trustees. I see there's a change, which is good. I've been trying to find out why you want to be a trustee. It's been hard, but I have found a trustee job description. There's not much in it. There's no requirements. The only requirement, you have to be a citizen of the US, you have to be 18 years old or older, you need to be a resident of the state, county, or precinct, and you need to be a voter. There's no education requirement, no experience requirement, no work history, no township history, nowhere. At the Route 40 used to be a blinking light. None of the farmers had had their farms split in half because they decided they wanted to put an interstate within. Their property was taken. They was paid, but it was taken. They had no choice. Nobody wants change in our rural community. I think one of the seats up there should be represented by a farmer. We are a rural community supposedly, so there's no representation for those folks up there. We are a rural community supposedly, so there's no representation for those folks up there. There's been a lot of impact on farmers' livelihoods around here that the decisions made by the trustees. I think to be a trustee, you should be a landowner. You should live in the township, you should have some history in the township, and you should own land, you should be a taxpayer. Nothing against people that rent, but most of the time renters are just transients, they may not pay year long, they come in, they won't put skin in the game, but they don't want to play. Heard a lot about red flags, about the administrator positions, red flags, red flags, red flags. Well, there are some folks around here, it's got to be a red flag in their past history that they're like, they're out in Harvard, they need nine one one. So I mean, we as voters only know what you guys tell us when we vote for you. That's all we know, we don't know your history, we don't know your experience, we don't know your goals, but I don't think I know very many poor politicians. You guys are all politicians now, somebody said, I'm not a politician. Well, you are a politician. So you got to live with the old saying that they say, when can you become a lawyer, car dealer, politician, or teenager, just lies when their lips are moved. I'm just saying, you know, we need to, we need to work on the future, get things done, try to uphold everybody in the township and not just. All you have to do to get elected to this office, I think, have a good Facebook or a good internet connection and a lot of housing support. Because the farmers, you know, farmers, they may have two boats in their household, they may own a hundred acres, they may own five hundred acres, they got two boats. Somebody's got a hundred houses in their community, that's two hundred boats. Yet they only got two, they may have three or four boats in each household. So that's where you get your support, go to the housing vote, get your support, and you'll win elections.
Thank you. Is there any more public comments?
Hi there, I'm Izzy Parlay, I live in the One Force Center, Glen Crossing. I have never been to a meeting before, so thank you for allowing me to come here and know the meeting was this evening. I have lived in Edna for less than three years now, and I moved here for a job in Columbus and Edna stood out to me as a great place to live. I understand that with the fast growth of Columbus, everything is pushing outward, it's inevitable that things are going to come out here, warehouses and whatnot. But there are some beautiful neighborhoods in this town with some really great people, and it seems like that is not a focus to continue that kind of growth. We are able to pass school levees and have great school athletics and all types of things going on, and it's a shame that that does not, that kind of growth does not seem to be what I see and what I hear that is a focus for the growth of the community. I don't even know if that makes sense, I can't even believe I'm up here. But I really appreciate the school system and everything, and I am a mother of an elementary school student. And that will lead me to, I found out today, I live over here at Cumberland Crossing, we found out today that buses for an elementary will no longer be provided for the kids that live in Cumberland, Glen Crossing area. I know the school is right there, but there are no lights up, there's no school zone lights, you know, with the twenty mile per hour, there's no signage for the school. I don't know whose responsibility that is, but now knowing that there will be more kids walking, those are only K through three students there, and it would just be nice to know that there was a little safer way, more markings to know. I know the school sticks out, there's not much on either side, but it would just be nice to know that everyone knows, there's a school there, there's going to be kids walking, it's a school zone because it's twenty miles per hour when you're there and out of school. It would just be nice that if we didn't have continuous growth of warehouses and the residents were, again, a focus, great neighborhoods. I do not want more warehouses, I do not want high-density housing. I understand that apartments, they're fine, but why not build more great neighborhoods like Orchard Glen and Glen Crossing, Cumberland Crossing, things like that? I don't know why that's funny, but that's fine. Just work together, you guys were already elected, you were elected to be part of a team, please work together, don't work against each other, you've already made it, you're here. Congratulations, thank you. Just please work together, work for us, be transparent. Just be there, work together, I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Even on your whole business, Blessing Box Resolution and Contract. Edna Township was approached by Judith Grant regarding the installation of a blessing box on the township grounds. Is there a motion for the blessing box?
We shall have a resolution of the package due. Jeff doesn't have a motion sheet. Do the resolution of the reason it took this person.
Oh, the agreement's on the back of this?
Yes. It's going to be number one.
Do we know where this is at yet already?
I'm sorry?
Do we know where this is going already?
Yes, okay.
We have a location?
We just, we know it's going in the park.
Oh, you're just going in the park?
So we have a really thing, we really should go in the park, but that's something that we can talk about, discuss.
All right. Make a motion to approve the agreement for the Blessing Box Resolution Number twenty-two dash oh five dash oh three. Any other one correct?
I'll second.
There should be a header on there for your motion, up at the top of the resolution.
Resolution to approve the agreement for the Blessing Box. Board of Trustees of Edna Township will be held, entitled that with the record session.
This has to be a resolution to approve the agreement for the Blessing Box and then Exhibit A.
Oh, Exhibit A, okay. Exhibit A says attachment right to a member?
Yes, yes, Exhibit A.
Add Exhibit A to my motion, is that what you want me to do?
We have one of these marketure.
As far as discussion, are we not going to, like you said, determine where that's going to be? Or that could be a decision later?
Well, I mean, we know it's going to be in the park because it's us as a board that we should discuss if we want it under a tree for sun of summer months, and also in an area where, once we put up some cameras on the building, it'll kind of shine over there as well, so we can keep it. So we kind of know it has to be on the side of the park, where they can actually pull up, the car can pull up, the car can pull right up, and that's the pot right there. So that's, that's what I propose, except for you guys and what you guys.
As I said, I have concerns because in the wintertime, we don't maintain those sidewalks in there, so I think that would be dangerous if you put it in the park. But I would like to ensure that we move this forward from the first time that Judy came to me about this, that I presented it to the board, I'd like to get this moving along. I pushed forward to be, the design of it approved last time, so we can move it forward. They're done pretty much building it, can we decide now where it's going to go?
Yeah, we can look, in fact, yeah, that's no problem, yeah.
Because delay for delay's sake is, I don't think, good for the support of the community and this is better than for the residents, so if we can get that approved, if we move it forward, I'd like to do that.
That's fine, no problem. I did a walk through the park, Vance and I and Laura, and just to get an idea of where it would be. So if you pull up right here where the cars are, there's a little walkway there, you don't even have to go into the park, it's exactly right there. So you don't have to go inside the park, but like you said, you're concerned about snow or ice or whatever. But if it's right there, under the tree, which is close to the fence there, so that's an area. So you guys can kind of figure out if that's an area you guys want to explore.
Does that work for you, Judy?
That's kind of where I was hoping, because I know if you park at the end there, then you got to go in the grass.
Correct.
I don't want people to have, I want it to be seen, but yet not close to the houses because I don't think that's really fair as a resident. But I was thinking the same way, where the walkway is, to put it to the left or right, it doesn't matter, and then it's right there.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's a perfect spot.
Bob, do you have any concerns about maintenance of the park or that location there? Is there any way we can add amendment or approve the location on this now, so that we can move this forward?
Chairman, Chairman McKee? I believe in the previous meeting that I passed any work of verification of a part to the general location.
Right.
And then you passed that in the previous meeting.
Right, we did. So then you and I decided that that would be the area for that box, and so we can move forward. Okay.
Now, full maintenance on it?
She will be responsible, that's all in the, that's all in the.
And so if she decides that she's not happy anymore, we can just take care of it.
Right, so we're not responsible for if somebody gets sick, things go down, if that's fail or.
Or starts having problems and says, you know, it looks like a return here, we'll decide some.
Yes.
How's my trust, your understanding too?
Item seven says thirty-three.
I saw it.
Roll call.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Rosamond McKee?
Yes.
Mission passed.
Thank you for your effort.
Thank you. Anyone wants a comprehensive plan? Township has received thirty-three applications for the comprehensive plans of date community, or maybe CAC if you want to call it. The trustees will review and add this to the trustee's agenda for May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. Okay, that's all on your own business, we're going to move on to new business. On May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, from six to eight P.M., the trustee work session to identify and discuss Edna Township Board of Trustees' twenty-twenty-two township business priorities and confirm agenda items for the June seventh, twenty-twenty-two trustee's regular meeting. I am proposing to hold trustee work session on May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two during the regular scheduled Board of Trustee meeting for the purpose of confirming twenty-twenty-two Edna Township priority business items shared by the Edna Township Board of Trustees' members and the purpose agenda items, request for June seventh, twenty-twenty-two regular meetings of the Board of Trustees. Mr. Vance, do you want to add anything to that?
Madam Chair, Madam President, I think the best thing for, you know, professional local government organizations to do is to coordinate on a regular basis and get ideas, get insight as to what the leadership would like the township, in this case, to accomplish and be prepared to direct staff accordingly. And with workshops, without negotiating agendas, on the night of the meeting, you have an opportunity to allow your very talented professional staff to put together supporting information and direct it to you so that you can make more educated, more thought-out decisions going forward. And so I think a work session on the seventeenth is a great idea.
Is there a motion?
Were you having a discussion beforehand or were you discussing after the second motion? I didn't understand the process, is there a motion?
And we do, Madam President, we do have motion recommendations for consideration if any trustee is interested in making such a motion.
You want a motion for the work session, is that what you want? Go to the work session.
Because it's a work session, yes.
On just this one or a lot of the cases?
Like this?
On just this first one?
This one, yes.
So you want a motion to change part of the regular meeting to our work session, right?
No, it'll be within your regular, but you still have to add it to the same.
Still, you still offer to the public, they'll still come in. Want to explain, Mr. Vance?
Correct, it's a work session, but the, this is item, new business, item A. And the president introduced the proposal. The president gave some background information, if any trustee is interested in making a motion, and there is a recommended motion, and that motion gets a second, then discussion can ensue and a vote could take place. If this proposal does not get a motion, does not get a second, it would die and we would therefore go on to the next item of business on the agenda.
All right, and I'll move to Edna Township Board of Trustees' work session starting six P.M., including it later at eight P.M. on May seventeen, twenty-twenty-two during the regular scheduled trustees meeting.
I'll second. Discussion?
Yes, I have a concern about this, that number one, it's going to be confusing the public that we have a regularly scheduled meeting at six P.M. And now you're going to say we have a work session at six P.M., indicating various items. Why wouldn't the work session be just wrapped into the regular meeting or held prior to, as most jurisdictions do, say work session from five to six? Having it concurrent with the regular meeting, how is the regular meeting going to start at six and the work session start at six? You're not providing proper notice to the public for the regular meeting or the work session if you don't intend to actually start the meeting at that time. People do have busy schedules, maybe they want to attend the work session items and not the regular meeting. So I believe it should be at a separate specified time or wrapped into the regular meeting, and then as you go down the agenda, then you reach the work session and then that begins. So I would be against this as proposed because, again, I don't think it's appropriate to have two meetings starting at the same time. Do it before, after, or included within the regular meeting?
Madam President, if appropriate. And my understanding of the president's proposal is a work session within the regular meeting. And it is a proposal, and the proposal is to have a work session on May seventeenth between six and eight, and it will be seen, it will be advertised as a regular meeting with a work session included, there will be public comments. And if a trustee supports that possibility, then they can vote for it. And if the trustee does not support the proposal as presented, then they can vote against it.
And I would just like to add that Mr. Vance misspoke, he said it would be between six and eight. This states that it starts at six, so you're going to have a regular meeting start at six, the work section, session start at six. So we've got for transparency to the public and just basic, it should. Do we change our motion and make it like, as part of a six o'clock meeting? Would that be better? I think that would be appropriate. Like you have an executive session in the middle of your meeting, but we don't tie those. It would just happen. It would just be one of the items, work session, or as most other entities do, they hold it prior or after as, as specified time.
Jeff, your motion already says during the regular meeting.
Yeah, okay. Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out whether it's happening in the middle of the meeting versus you're saying you have a different meeting for that one? Is that what you're trying to say? You're saying it's as if it's both, there's two separate meetings, work session and. Because within it, it's just one meeting, it's the regular meeting. That's my position. I haven't had a work session yet, I think so, I'm interested to see how it goes, actually. As I said, most. We don't want to do any more, so I'm fine with the one. Most municipalities and entities do it prior, after, it's a separate item.
Roll call. Mark Evans?
No.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Rosamond McKee?
Yes.
Mission passed, two to one. Mission pass two-one.
Edna Township, uh, Edna Township Local Government Organizations currently does not have an Edna Township purchasing policy. Policy in effect, professional local government organizations benefit from the elected officials and employees following purchasing guidelines prior to the responsible expenditure of budget, budgeted public funds. Mr. Vance, do you have any, do you want to add to that?
Uh, no ma'am. No ma'am.
Is there a motion? For purchasing policy?
And again, Madam President, there is a, um, recommended motion for consideration if any trustee is interested in utilizing that information on the second page.
I'll move for the township board trustees to direct Edna Township staff and Edna Township's contracted management consultants to draft a purchasing policy. Proposal for the board trustees to discuss at the next Edna Township Board of Trustees' work session.
I second.
So it looks like we're trying to have our people in here give us a policy, right? Propose?
A policy in place.
Our people.
Good. Good text.
Is this one of the policies you were looking at in honor?
This is, I, I, since I took my seat, all about proper policies and procedures that were missing. I, I mean, I was, it was, it was blocked prior and glad we're moving forward.
Okay.
Uh, I don't care who takes credit as long as we get it done. So, uh, at least we're moving forward. But again, we could have addressed this back in January, but, uh, yeah, I do, I do think we, we need proper policies, not just this, but throughout the township. And we also have to ensure, it's one thing to have a policy, it's another thing to follow because a lot of policies are not being followed in this township still and those need to be addressed as I've said previously.
Question?
Roll call. Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
Ross McKee.
Yes.
Pass three-zero.
Move on to, uh, the, uh, Edna Township employee job description. Professional local government organization benefits updating job description. Mr. Vance, would you like to add anything to this?
I haven't taken a, a very close look at the, the existing job descriptions, I believe. Um, there is some information put together related to the different job responsibilities within the township's organization. Uh, regardless of, of what we have, it's not a bad idea to, uh, take a second look at what you have, see how it can be improved. Um, employees with job descriptions, you know, have a specific understanding as to what they are expected to accomplish, accomplish on a regular basis. It puts you in a position to, uh, determine whether or not they've been successful and have annual raises and evaluations, et cetera. And from time to time, again, they do need to be updated. So I would appreciate the opportunity to work with, um, your fine staff to come up with some recommendations on how to update these job descriptions and bring those recommendations for, for your consideration at the work session, the regular meeting with a work session included.
Is there, is there a motion?
I like a motion, move for that. Township Board Trustees to direct Edna Township staff and Edna Township contracted management consultancy to wrap the proposals, to updates Edna Township employee job descriptions for the board trustees to discuss the next Edna Township Board of Trustees work session.
Second? I'll second. Discussion?
I'd just like to say that this is another thing I'm glad we're moving forward on, but I, I do think that we need to include, uh, our attorney Ben Albrecht, who is reviewing our employee manual and dealing with the union, that is going to be dealing with job descriptions also. Uh, he, he might be of some benefit, especially with this immense employment-related experience. And, um, so he, he should probably consult, consult also with that. But this, along with the, uh, proper policies and that, I think is a good move. And, you know, uh, long overdue.
Do you think we should have him at the meeting or do you think we just get some input from him?
No, I don't, I don't think there's a reason to have him at the meeting, but I would at least have him review some of the information. Uh, I mean, attorney's fees are quite a bit, right? Uh, so I, I think sending it to him as we keep it reviewed on his instead of having him come in, uh, would, would, would do there. But yeah, definitely we need descriptions and as Mr. Vance said about ensuring employees are properly evaluated, that was one of my concerns before where I was told prior evaluations were just photocopying, things changed, uh, none, none done. And I, so we need to get back on that proper thing. And again, what I've been pushing for three hundred months and glad we're kind of moving forward.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
Ross McKee.
Yes.
Task three-zero.
Move on to the Edna Township development team. Professional local government organizations without in-house economic development personnel can benefit from establishing a development team to professionally responsible development interests successfully complete the land use development application. Mr. Vance, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, Madam President, just in, in my local government experience, uh, time is money and if you have, um, development interests, if you have local interests that are, um, interested in, in potentially investing in new, new developments or redevelopments, um, if you as a local government can provide, uh, opportunities and point persons, uh, so to speak, uh, so that they know where to get started and immediately they feel, um, that their interest, uh, is being appreciated and they are, uh, being taken seriously as, as far as, uh, the importance and value of their time and their resources they're looking to bring to Edna Township in this case. And I understand that Edna Township does not have an economic developer currently, um, and currently Edna Township does not have a development team. Uh, in my local government experience, again, in Pickerton, we had a development team and throughout my eight years here where we were able to successfully, um, help them complete, responsibly complete development applications that eventually equated to about two-hundred-and-sixty million dollars worth of responsible, uh, complementary, commercial and residential development activities. So I think it's a great opportunity to create such a team in Edna, uh, to start conversations with individuals that are looking to good thing, to do good things in Edna Township, um, either coming from places elsewhere or, um, you know, locally, uh, residing currently.
Is there a motion? Move on to the economic development application.
And I think, Madam President, one last point. Um, everything, the, the, the great thing about local government is nothing is written in stone, anything can be changed. So something to consider going forward, you and I discussed the, the possibility of a development team. Uh, we put together some potential initial members. It doesn't say that, that this development team cannot be added to going forward in the future or, you know, one of these positions can be eliminated if necessary. Um, so this is just a, a proposal to get started with such an informal entity.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, move to create Edna Township development team that includes the president of Edna Township Board of Trustees, Edna Township zoning inspector, chairman of the zoning commission, and head township southwest looking water and sewer district representative.
I'll second. Discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple comments on this, uh, regarding the chairman of the zoning commission. I believe that could be a conflict. You're going to have an individual that's promoting, uh, certain business and that, that if there's rezoning in that, that his board, uh, would see that rezoning. So I don't think that is appropriate to have him, uh, in that. Uh, as far as a member of the board trustees being president, uh, why wouldn't it be the president and maybe not the one that is most knowledgeable, most interested, most, uh, anything that's selected by the board? Uh, because like you said, I've, uh, I would be interested in it. I've dedicated last over two years, uh, towards zoning development and all that. Very familiar with, with all their different economic, uh, developmental concepts. Try to bring you along initially when we would like to too. And so I, I don't think that should be limited to the president. And as one of our residents indicated, I believe it was Teresa, uh, where is the citizen representation? There, there's a lot of qualified citizens that, that could lend their expertise to this committee. It seems like a very narrow, uh, board. Um, if, if there hasn't been much thought foot to it, I don't think we should, we should create it now. Uh, and also we should address some of, what are the goals? What are, you know, it, it just seems like we're throwing together four people and saying, okay, do it without any real thought. This appears to be your motion with Mr. Vance. I haven't, I mean, to this day, I haven't had a discussion with Mr. Vance. Uh, he's still refusing to, to work with me. So I have had no.
Hey, this, this is quite a order.
So I had no, uh, interaction with this or any other item on here. Uh, so I, I would, I would move to table this until the next meeting. Um, that's my motion.
And Madam President, just whenever appropriate after the trustee comments.
So.
You weren't actually making a motion for it?
I made a motion to table.
You already have, you already have a motion on the floor, so you have to go down it or remove the other motion on the floor for Robert's board. Jeff made a motion, Ross on the second, so you'd have to remove it or?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend the motion to, uh, replace, uh, president with trustee of board of trustees, uh, remove chairman of the zoning commission and add, uh, two citizen representatives appointed by the board.
You said move president, right?
Uh, and insert trustee, trustee of Edna Township Board of Trustees. So they would be selected by the board. And remove the chairman of the zoning commission. Then add two citizen representatives appointed by the board. they are part of that.
For Robert's board, you need a second.
Wait.
You need a second. Do you have a motion?
I need a second for my, for the motion.
What was that?
For, for discussion.
He's making, there's already a motion on the floor. Mark is making a motion to amend it. So for Robert's board, you need a second and then discussion, but I was just trying to help clarify.
I'm a second for discussion. So, yeah, Mark, why do you?
He's doing an amendment.
Okay, so I can understand you say you want to remove the president, so any other trustees can be on that, correct?
Correct, because you don't know who's number one, who's qualified, interested. Maybe the president's not interested. And then, so why not have that and then it be a board decision? It shouldn't be tied to a position Mr. McKee at the previous meeting said the president only does the agenda and runs the meeting. Well, it seems like you're trying to pigeonhole that in there. I think it should be someone that's the most qualified and the most interested. Maybe somebody doesn't have interest in that if they are the president.
Okay.
Presidents can change.
Add, okay. Well, add the two citizens. So where will that citizens come into discussions that are supposed to be kept alive a lot of times during some.
Just, uh, N D As? I mean, it results even with trustees of N D As.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're, we're different. I think that puts this in, I think, a lower risk because they're not really a, I don't know.
I mean, do you have a see a conflict with the chairman of the zoning commission maybe? That they're going to see this about almost every twelve month, likely it's going to be rezoned.
Well, that's true. And the chairman needs to be, uh, aware of what's going on here.
And so it comes down to he can, they'll be presented that information like the other board members are when it comes to their committee. I'm saying it's a conflict if they're promoting that business, what do you think's going to happen when they go to committee here?
And a lot of times they, they find out, the chairman finds out and stuff, a lot of it for, it actually comes to their board.
I just think it's a conflict and just appearance of a conflict. So that's my suggestion.
And you, and, and you said they add them, the administrator?
If, if we ever do get an administrator.
Yes, which we have a, we have a consultant administrator right now. He would not be part of that?
He, he, well, when you say administrator, he says no, he's a management consultant.
Okay. So you want administrator or full-time administrator, you're saying?
A full-time administrator and employee administrator.
Employee administrator, okay.
Madam President, one point of clarification whenever appropriate. The only responsibility of this development team as currently proposed is to help, uh, the potential investor, help the potential applicant complete whatever development application they have, complete whatever land use application that they may be required to complete on behalf of their proposals. And if they would like to discuss, uh, some of their, um, you know, development interests, if they'd like to share any of their, uh, information associated with their business plan, um, they can do so, you know, within a, a more, um, professional setting as this is not an advisory committee, so to speak. The only purpose of this team is to complete applications responsibly, not advise on whether or not development should be supported, um, denied, et cetera. Just complete the application itself. So it benefits from having somebody that, that has intimate knowledge of, of the water and sewer situation, of the, the zoning situation, of the, the leadership of the board of trustees. Um, and then that's how the proposal came together in other places and now here in Edna Township.
This is more of a, if somebody wants to come and flick it along or some sort of it, it's a list of people to go to.
It's, it's time is money and a lot of places, a lot of local governments you go to, and it takes forever to complete an application. And by that time, your financing is run out, um, you know, you've lost whatever potential backing you might have had. You know, you, you have to dance with engineers and planners, et cetera. So this, this informal entity, you know, helps you with additional resources to, you know, get through those processes in a timely manner. Um, and then Edna stands out, you know, um, from, from other localities, you know, in and around this area of central Ohio because you provide this accommodation to help people get things done efficiently as opposed to have things drag out for months or years when they're proposing to invest in your community. And it's a fluid type of, of situation. It can be improved, it can be changed, it can, this is a starting point as far as a development team for Edna is, is concerned.
Right, yeah, I think water and sewer district are a huge thing because we have proved, I'm thinking of water and sewer, there's a lot of water and sewer out there.
And that's going to be another item on a near future agenda, I predict.
So as I understand it, this is like a help desk for the developers, come in, make sure their applications go smoothly. Has nothing to do with seeking good development, making sure it's proper development, it's whatever their application is, help them through the process.
That is incorrect. That is incorrect. If you show up and, if you show up and indicate that, hey, I've got this great investment idea and you're trying to sell it to the president of the board of trustees, you're trying to sell it to the chairman of the, the zoning commission, you're trying to sell it to, um, the, the representative of the water and sewer district and it's just, it's not complimentary to, um, Edna, Edna Township's outlook on, you know, what would be best here, what would be best there. Let's say it contradicts the future land use plan that you're putting together and you're revising. If, if, if a point of, of contact in the development community comes in, they can get a quick read on, on whether or not. they can get a quick read on whether or not the proposal's going to be successful in Edna. If they can't sell it to these leaders within the community, they're probably not going to spend, you know, much more time in Edna. They're going to go somewhere else where their proposals might be better suited. But if they meet with this leadership team, and I stress, this is a team that's made up of leaders, and they can sell these leaders on responsible development proposals, these leaders are then in a position to help them efficiently go through the application process, not by taking any shortcuts or not doing, you know, things that they're supposed to do, but by helping them responsibly complete their development applications, making sure every item that's going to be of potential interest to the Board of Trustees, to the zoning commission, to the water and sewer board, is included. So it eliminates unnecessary delay. That is the purpose of this development team, to accommodate investment interest and eliminate unnecessary delay.
And as you said, you say help them make sure, it's not just the application as they present and help them get through the system. It's making changes. That's where I have a concern about the chairman of the zoning commission. If it meets the comprehensive plan, that is going to go back in front of them. I don't think that's the problem. And again, it's, you say to assist completing the land use development applications. Well, assisting is assisting, but you're providing input. You're saying, well, maybe do this, maybe do that. And again, that's where I think the conflicts happen. That's where other people should be involved in that. And if we do, if we had a true development team, we'd be searching for good development. We'd be trying to bring those in. We don't want to sweep people to come here because what we've been given so far are warehouses, warehouses, and warehouses. We need to search, we need to work with the Lick County. And that's a development team we need. So I don't think this is sufficient. At least it'd be a little bit better, as I suggested.
A trustee on here is going to vote on that too because it's a zoning commission, right?
All right, well, if you're going to put a trustee on there, why limit it to a position?
But I'm saying a trustee votes on it too, so... Any zoning commission chair? Any zoning commission person, or you're saying?
Then put two zoning commissioners. I don't agree with the makeup of this committee. Again, I have zero input on this. This is the most I've spoken with Mr. Vance since he's been hired. And I think we should think about it more. I would rather table it, but I think more thought should be put into this.
You actually have two motions on the floor.
All right, for three and a half months, it's been delays, stone wall, block.
I mean, if you isn't, as a board, want to table it, then all you have to do is draw two motions and then table it. But you have, for Robert's report, you have a motion on the floor, a non-amended motion on the floor, you haven't voted on either.
Right.
That's all.
We're going to roll call. You have to roll call on the amendment first, which would be remove the president of the trustees. So I don't know if that's what I have. That's the amendment. If you're going to have, which one of you are going to be on it now? And then the two citizen reps and remove the chairman of the zoning commission. That was all your amendments, right, Mark?
And administrator.
I'm going to be doing a roll call on the amended, which is...
So you're going to roll call on the amended motion, to amend the motion, okay. Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
No.
Rosslyn McKee?
No.
So the amendments to the motion have failed, and now you'll vote on the original motion as the statement.
Is there a motion for the original motion? Is there a motion?
There's a roll call.
There are, sorry, roll call, we get the motion. Okay, roll call.
So the amendment failed. I'm going to roll call the original motion. Mark Evans?
No.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Rosslyn McKee?
Yes.
Can I make a recommendation just as your employee or whatever? You do, you may want to double check as Mark was pointing out that the trustee and the zoning commission member could serve on that because they are, I could say, rezoning, going to hear that later. I think as he's saying, if the zoning commission member has a conflict with them, you're so good with trustees. So if you have a developer coming in with a rezoning, a potential rezoning, you may not be able to have a zoning commission or your trustee on that board. I will give a legal opinion on that.
If they don't get voted on.
Well, then they'd have to abstain. So I think you're right. I think I would check.
All right, I'm for it now.
On that, on that, whether, if he's correct on the zoning commission chair, I think the trustee, the president of the board would have the same issue. Your zoning commission's providing a non-voting, your president of the board has voted. So if the zoning commission would have the common interest, your trustee's probably going to have more of a common interest.
Okay, and Madam Chair, if you have no objection, I will absolutely make sure that that would be appropriate to have these individuals included within informal discussions associated with investor proposals. With the, once again, the goal of completing, successfully completing a development application or a land use application or a rezoning application, which goes through a process anyway for all the independent consideration.
And this is just why I want it to be tabled, because it seemed rushed through and not enough due diligence performance.
Okay, we're going to move on to the, I'll turn it over to the open access in regards to the MS4 stormwater.
I am happy to report that Edna Township is not facing any state fines associated with any kind of lack of submitting reports or permit applications, et cetera, associated with the MS4 stormwater permit. Edna Township does not have a distinct MS4 stormwater permit that is recognized by the state of Ohio. Edna Township has the benefit of a very supportive county in Licking County, and Licking County has an MS4 permit, and Edna Township is within that permit that is administered by the county. So we have opportunities to support our friends at the county, to do good things as far as stormwater management in Edna Township are concerned. And I am continuing to get more familiar with the representatives at the county level, and I will bring some additional updates to this Board of Trustees' attention in the near future.
I'd like to make a comment on that, please. This is something that I was working on prior. I was the one that submitted the MS4 reports this year. Also, originally was dealing with a stormwater protection plan that I handed off to you, Mr. McKee. You were saying you were looking into it. We had a meeting last week. So there's no meeting, there's no, you handed over to Mr. Vance to deal with now.
Mark?
I'm trying to understand if this is being taken care of.
Yes, it is being taken care of. Mr. Vance explained that he's been in touch with him and he's taking care of it.
And then the other thing, like you said, I have been working on that. It's another thing, I'm very disappointed that, again, hasn't reached out to me, won't talk to me. These are things that I think could move forward quicker with the township and at least expense, because at $66 an hour, instead of devoting a lot of time on this, trying to figure out what's going on, could maybe get an update from me and then deal with something else. So I would ask for some communication on this matter or any other ones I could deal with.
Can we have Lynn's Road, that's about being approved, I think. Mr. Vance, can you present that to...
Yes, ma'am. Zoning officer for Edna Township and myself. And Stephen, I believe, we're going to meet with the residents on Lynn's Road. I know this is an ongoing situation, and there's a lot of history associated with this, but we're going to meet with these folks on Friday afternoon to take a look at what they want to accomplish to educate me in my new position as to what they want to accomplish so that I can utilize their feedback to come back with some recommendations in the near future. And I stress in the near future. I hope to have some recommendations for your work session on the 17th.
I'd just like to make a comment on that also. This has been a concern of mine from the beginning, even before I ran for election, dealing with this. My initial meeting with Dan Harrington and the others involved was on November 22nd last year. I informed them of the issues and how I've been working with the residents and what their concerns are. I've been working with them nonstop since. I did find out about a proposed meeting last Friday with Mr. Vance and Singleton, homeowners, and they requested that I be present. That meeting was canceled and postponed up until this Friday. I do plan on attending. It was known, and Mr. Vance, again, excluded myself. I don't know why, for an issue that I've been passionate about and the only one trying to get resolution for, it's being excluded. There's no reason for that. These people's lives have been impacted greatly, their quality of life and everything. And I want to ensure that it's handled properly. I've been, again, dealing with Dan Harrington, Chris Connolly, all the developers, and stating that, you know, it needs to be addressed, especially with them wanting that second building, those incentives there. It's an opportunity where we can get those, get a resolution for those residents. But why I would be excluded, I don't have, like you said, I want to ensure that there's a resolution. I've asked to be copied out of all communications. I don't think I am. I've asked for information, so I've forgotten it. So that is a great concern to me, but I will be there Friday, and we'll continue to fight for the residents. I hope we can get a resolution. Again, I don't care who takes credit for it, get it done. But I've been there from the beginning. I have in labor. I'm glad to see others aren't bored now, but let's get it done. So put a clue there, please. Thank you.
Time on the meeting, please. We'll move on to Edna Township, the trustee assignments.
One moment.
On April 5th, the trustee passed a resolution to enter into the contract with Jim Leonard of Neighborhood Strategies LLC to work on updates to the Edna Township comprehensive plan. The Board of Trustees did not, I repeat, did not point a trustee as a point of contact. Is there a motion to assign trustee Johnson to work with Jim Leonard on the Neighborhood Strategies LLC on an updated comprehensive plan in the Citizens Advisory Committee?
So it's failed?
Is there a motion to assign trustee Johnson to work with Jim Leonard?
He didn't do anything the first time.
Mark, for the rules tonight, add another motion, or we have to wait?
Yeah, she is. Are you going to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
If you don't get a second, then it's not a...
I make a motion to assign trustee Johnson to work with Jim Leonard.
I'll second. Discussion? All right. I figured this was coming. I totally object to this. Mr. Johnson has been the one that's ignored the past comprehensive plan time and time again. That's why we have the issue with FedEx. And we shouldn't really say FedEx, it's in all it did. FedEx is just the least seen. But I've been the one that's been passionate about following the comprehensive plan, about not violating it, about not doing everything PMPT. And to be just pushed to the side, especially after this election, where at least 78% voted for that referendum, saying, stop.
Will be.
And order, please.
Oh, now here.
I mean, this is just, I believe, a slap in the face of the citizens. Again, when I interviewed for the Water Board and I think the zoning commission, all trustees disregarded the comprehensive, it's just a guide, it's just a, and then... So you're going to put someone that's disregarded the comprehensive plan for 11 years in charge of the new comprehensive plan? That, I believe, is ludicrous and against the will of people and just common sense. I would want to make sure it's done properly. And this isn't going to lead to that. Again, proper policies and procedures could go... It's, you're trying to marginalize my duties and just take control of everything. This is, I just think, unbelievable, but expected. So I just think it's a shame, and I think the residents know. But for, again, someone that has disregarded the comprehensive plan for 11 years, said it's only a guide, we don't have to follow it. Should not be involved with the comprehensive plan. I don't know what more I could say because I've said it for two and a half years. And there was an election, and look what happened. The people spoke. So if you want to go against the people, one, you're going to do it. You took over this board, slow, little by little, you're doing your thing. So...
No.
Roll call?
Can we ask why, Rosalyn?
Roll call?
Can we ask why, Rosalyn?
Point of order.
Why are you turning on us?
That's point of order.
Mark Evans?
No.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Rosslyn McKee?
Yes.
The pass, no.
Yes, we vote no.
Yeah, we all vote no.
We don't.
No, not everybody.
Right, not everyone.
I'm glad to see Jeff's a shot off a long distance. I know we have the experience, but you're ready to go for it. I'm hoping for the best, you go. I hope better, I hope...
Ma'am, can everybody speak?
Okay, we'll move on to the National Field Settlement Agreement, Resolution 22050302. I move the resolution authorizing and directing the president of the Board of Trustees to execute all documents necessary to participate in the settlement concerning the state of Ohio's open law litigation with distributors, AmeriSource, Purge, Hardwell Health, and McKesson. Is there a motion?
Sorry.
So Jeff's making a motion? I'll cycle. Discussion?
This is, I think, the work I'm on, Mark, earlier. Well, this is, I'm a member of the District 18 Board for the Ohio One, you know, with the ongoing crisis. And this is another thing that I asked to be placed on this agenda at, by the requested time of Thursday morning that wasn't placed on there. Again, something needed, I said was needed. I did see that this was put out to our outside counsel to review. And I don't know why we did that, to pay someone when we have a prosecutor at no charge. So we were talking about expenditures of the township. I think that was frivolous there. I did get the opinion from the prosecutor, who had spoke with the attorney, with the Ohio Attorney General's office, and they encouraged our acceptance of this, as I did previously. So I'm glad we're doing this. I don't know why it was added the day of, again. It could have been added Thursday when I requested it. But again, you know, I guess I'll forward all my requests to somebody else and they could put it on there. As far as this, we need it. And in the future, I think my agenda request should be taken under consideration, not just as a grant. So I have to say.
Roll call?
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Development McKee, yes, passed.
Moving on, I want you to report. The roll report was presented. Do you have any questions? Want to speak out on that, Mr. Bubba?
Well, I won't speak for him, but I'll speak for the department. Right now, we're in, you'll be starting with the pavement management group. They're going to be going through roads, I think, the 13th through 16th, where they're dependent to analyze the roads. So you see several trucks going around with their markers, you know, driving slowly, that's what, if anybody gets any calls, that's what they're doing, nothing suspicious. I've had Laura and Bubba going over...
I've had Laura and Bubba going over the previous roadwork done. As you know, the previous board, Mr. Perron, did not apply for the OPWC grant for the Etna proper east of 310, as it was supposed to, so I'm not sure if we want to just spend out of general funds to try to pave that or wait again, because that, by not applying to that cost is quite a bit possible if they would have awarded that. There's a few other roads that are in bad condition, so we're going to talk to a little more. He's crack seal and trying to save a couple of edges and that, so maybe delay, but I'll be reviewing that here in the next week or so, because we've got to make a decision if we're going to pave anything this year or if we're going to just hold on, wait until next year.
When was that report? Did you hear the back end company, right?
I don't have that on me. The deliverables are usually, they're starting, they're propelling, I got them, all the GIS shape maps they needed, and they're kind of getting that in the system of the park of roads. Again, the analyzation is, or the capturing of roads, it's 1316, I believe, end of May is deliverables, but I can verify my notes and my channel. But then we'll be getting close to, I mean, we've got to get bids out of there. Bubba knows what roads are pretty bad, and I'll talk about if they can hang on, if it's worth it to, you know, do that, but right now, he's crack seal and repairing potholes and all that right now, so.
So, Mr. Singleton? Anything to report?
Nothing additional to that, unless you have questions.
Mr. Vance, anything to report?
Uh, no ma'am, just glad to be here.
Oh, thank you. Glad to have you here. Mr. Stepp, for the water sewer, he provided a report to us. Trustee Johnson, do you have anything that you'd like to report today?
Um, yeah, we're, the new firehouse that we're building up on Taylor Road, it's just inside the Etna Township corner there, basically, right behind the living room. Working on it, the prices have probably gone up 60% on it, so we've got a way to do it within there, so it's still happening, we're just trying to work things down, you get dirt moving here, sitting on it. So the plans are almost finally complete, if you're interested, look at those, you could stop up there, you can see the plans for the new station.
I did have a question, did you get fiscal officer all the information she needed for the care of, or?
Yes, that's completely done, and I signed off, and we were approved, sent right to Mr. Perry over there. So, and she was copied on it.
Want to make sure that was complete?
It was done that same night we had that meeting, so the next morning it was sent out.
Cementary and parts are wrecked, we don't have anything to report right now. We're still working on split for the plan, so I don't know if you have anything on that, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Cavalleres this morning. He's in the process of getting all the, the two representatives from two properties, the Landmark property and the JBW property, to get the remainder surveys, and then he's also been in contact with Mr. England to get the remainder survey for the Darren properties, so they can move forward with the lot splits. He doesn't have time on it, it's, as they return calls to him, however, he will have his moving, he's through to his front runner, he apologized for any delay, because he's been tied up in a bunch of other stuff, but he has moved it up to his top priority and is pushing to get this done.
And Mr. Singleton, what about the Snyder property? Because I've had several calls from Mrs. Snyder wanting what their status of that, he's concerned that it should beat the deadline.
He's working on getting that, it will be done before the deadline. He is working on getting the remainder survey from the string right now, and as soon as he gets them, then he'll be filing for splits.
The board, it looks like the board is scheduled a meeting on May 12th at 1:00, held at our building on 81 LeRiche, because it's for the Jett's board, so that's on the 12th of May at 1:00. I just want to make an announcement from the trust, the trustee comments. I would like to thank the employees for the team efforts to pass two weeks of working on and with myself and Mr. Vance and serve the residents of the township, so I want to thank everybody for that, appreciate it. Okay, fiscal officer, moving on the fiscal report.
Can't we have any announcements or?
Just speak on it.
Well, I wanted to address some of the items that the residents spoke about. I have what?
Three minutes.
Point order, how do I have three minutes?
Under the Roberts Rule, we're talking three minutes, so we can move on, but go ahead.
Three, can you show me where the Roberts Rule is three minutes? Here. Three minutes is for discussion on motion, it's actually 10 minutes.
Let's go.
No, not let's go, it's point of order, we got to follow the rules here.
But it's not, it's not ten minutes long, but go ahead.
It is 10 minutes for debate. So, everybody sees what I'm dealing with here. Removed from the comprehensive plan, just marginalized. The consultant still will have, talk to me, meet with me, this is actually the most I've heard him. I've been told he's going to keep me in line, he's going to choose if and when he meets with me. The consultant should be serving the board, not one trustee, it's not a personal assistant for one trustee. So I think that's highly inappropriate. Again, the consultant should be working for the board. There was no, do you need some water, Mr. Vance? But it was told that when he was hired, that the board would direct his action. So far, I haven't seen the board directing anything except one trustee, so that is very disconcerting. Again, I was elected by residents to serve this township, and I'm slowly being marginalized, information not shared, meetings excluded, and it's on purpose, and I think it's improper. Now regarding the residents' comment about waiting for Rachel to rezoning until the comp plan is done, I do agree with you on that. I am concerned that things are going to be pushed forward. Mr. Hagy's property has sold, and with the conversation I had with the developers that bought it, I'm greatly concerned about what may be proposed. I hope this board does not move forward with any resignings against the comprehensive plan there. Teresa, about the dangerous curve, the rock placement, I still want to push forward on the resolution with that, including rumble strips, maybe lights illuminated signs, I'm not sure if this is going to work, because a lot of this is daytime, but again, it's going to come down to what are they going to want me to do? So I will continue to fight for why I was elected regardless, and continue to expose what's going on, if it's improper. Again, it's disheartening. Now, with, like I said, Lynn's Road, I will be there, Vicki won't believe him, but I will be there Friday to listen and discuss this. It'll give me an opportunity to maybe talk to Mr. Vance at least one time, and regarding Ms. Zucker, Lucy Zucker's public records request, most of those requests were not for records, just questions.
No, it was for the reporting, sorry.
What? Please, speak. And so I am very transparent, that's all I've pushed for and provide. I know some trustees are not responding to emails requesting that, that's unfortunate. I agree with Tom's painting, no more warehouse, no more identity, that's what I'm pushing for, and I will try to hold the board accountable there. KC Parley, copy the existing neighborhoods. Yes, let's do what we have and not throw in Reynoldsburg, throw in Columbus. People move out here for a unique experience, and again, the comprehensive plan, the rule that the prior board has ignored, and now, and now, it's, is it going to be ignored or just shoddily? I have close confidence in Jim Leonard, I think he's overworked, he's got too many clients, he's, I think, taken out more clients since then. But we should get a good comprehensive plan in, and this change is, I don't think they're going to do that. And then I would like to know, since there is some contention, and a resident did ask, I think it was Johnny Cremmons, of what Roberts Rules of Order are we following? Because I asked that of the township and did not get a response. So I, when I adopted it, I was under the 12th edition of the Roberts Rules of Order, newly revised. Is that what we're operating under? Apparently, I'm not even going to get a response. But I think that's important to know, because we've got to be operating off the same rules. It says 10 minutes for debate, not trustee comments, not, you're trying to limit debate, you're trying to limit discussion. I don't understand that. And one of the other things, I see a lot of agenda items on here, what about streaming of meetings by the township? Why isn't that a priority? If I would have had a conversation with Mr. Vance, I would have said, work on that, we have a new IT person in, we replaced the old one. We supposedly have an IT professional as president, why can't we get that implemented? I'm not even going to talk about trying to limit what I could do with the thing he has prosecuted, but why aren't we doing that? And again, my biggest thing is, why isn't Mr. Vance working for all trustees and not just one? He is not the president's personal assistant. So, yeah, this is disappointing, but expected. So I have to say.
I look forward to those of you applying to apply, we've got 30 some application at Red Mark, four on the conference land use council.
Thirty-three, so thirty-three. How are we deciding who's on the, or are you deciding?
I'm not yet, I'm the same, thanks God on her, so I didn't know how we're going to decide, I tell you the truth, of the purpose of Leonard, search for ways to do that.
Well, I would suggest all I choose.
And I think we have that on the work session, next meeting, correct? So you'll be involved, I'll be involved, Rosalyn will be involved.
Very exciting, first meeting except for May 11th, everybody said, can you make it May 11th?
So anyway, we're doing that, I look forward to, I'm not going to be an overbearing person on that committee, one of the residents that are on the committee will be the committee leaders, that's what I did last time, and that's my position on it. So I look forward to working with those who will be at all there.
I just want to let the people know, when it comes to us accepting applications, the township is governed that we have to, if a developer comes in, we have to set enough, we have to accept that application, whether the comp plan is done or not. This board can deny it, but if it comes in, there's a process per Ohio Revised Code that the zoning office has to accept the application, and it has to go through a process that's all governed by Ohio Revised Code. So we, as a township, can't just say that we are not going to accept an application until the comp plan is done, unless it would go into like a moratorium or something. Once it comes in the office, it's governed by a process per Ohio Revised Code that we have to send it to the planning and the zoning commission, and then to the board of trustees.
I think you're alluding, I said, I did not say that.
No, you did say.
Approved, I would have proven.
No, I'm just letting, it gets confusing with residents, and then they get upset because we're rezoning something, and then they see it in the paper, and we take the phone calls in the office. I'm just saying, we can't control if the developer comes in the office and submits an application. We have to accept it as a township.
We control if it's approved.
Exactly, you can control if it's approved. I'm not going off of your comment, I'm going off of a comment a resident made earlier. I'm making it clear, Mark, I'm not saying it, you said it. But we get phone calls when it hits the paper that there's a rezoning going on in the township, and we're held by a Ohio Revised Code. We can't tell the developer at the door they can't submit an application to rezone their property. We have to follow the due process.
Right, but as Mr. Vance said, excuse, Mr. Vance said, the good president, the chair person, that if you're meeting with them, you're going to encourage them, why would they zone, try to go for zoning if they're not going to get approval if it's not favorable? That's what I'm talking about, I think we need to listen to the people and not continue on a path of the past, which we aren't.
Fiscal officer reports, Mrs. Barry is not here tonight, so I'll.
Was anyone of questions answered?
Sorry?
I thought trusted comments to answer questions. Community chat, I literally had 14 questions and you got to answer one.
We're not here to answer your questions, sir, we just made comments.
Now, what the heck, you're here for. You're going to ignore that?
I didn't realize, Julie, the fiscal officer Barry wasn't going to be here. You guys did receive a couple emails from her, I have the resolutions that she printed, provided, she needed one to amend, the appropriations, Mark might be able to speak on her behalf, and the other is your standard purchase orders and payment bill. I really don't have any more information than you guys have that was provided in your email.
Rosalyn, you got that information?
Resolution 220503, is there?
Yeah, I think her number is three, I think her number's three, but I mean, I don't, other than her email, I don't have any more explanation on this appropriations than she sent by email to all of them.
This was, yeah, it was.
You're at number three, you're on number three for that.
Okay, okay, it's two, so.
Resolution to approve the purchase order as presented.
We're under the appropriations first. She had lots of information, I'm going to.
Oh, sorry. We're going to do the appropriation.
She was going to do a link on appropriations and fiscal officer report.
So, resolution to amend the 2022 appropriation, that's this one.
We should do it as presented, I guess if you have any questions, you can hit up to me later.
So, resolution number key 22-5-3-3?
Correct, yes.
Do you want me to explain any of that, or wait for a second, or? I'll second. Go ahead. Okay, well.
So Rosalyn made the motion, and Jeff seconded, and then Mark's going to do discussion?
Do you guys understand why, or do you want to explain more?
Yeah, we're going to have to do discussion, we're going to have to discuss.
Yeah, please. Well, purpose of this, she received a notice from the county regarding the budget, and it was to reflect those changes, then also, there was a transfer needed for the health insurance of the road crew employees, so that was the two changes. So yes, that must be approved tonight.
It looks like they amended, amended is what, we're good this time?
The amended, correct. Because it was for 620,000, amended per, again, the budget certification with the county that she got back, I think, in mid-March.
Madam President, whenever appropriate? Just for consideration, if the fiscal officer for the township or any local government needs action to be taken, it's always good to have some sort of memorandum from that individual, clearly defining, clearly documenting what their recommendations are, so that there is no doubt, you know, as to the action you potentially take in those regards.
And I would say that was included in the email sent to all board members previously, it is in good.
So it's basically a one ball of $687,000, right, is what they're saying, according to this?
That's just the appropriations, yeah, that's just estimated, that's what they're coming up with, so we're basing that based on their provision. So, we're basing that based on their provision, then also, Julia's changing. Again, it's specified in her email, sends all board members why she's doing this, and why it's required. So I'm not sure why a special memorandum is required. If you guys have any questions, I think she sent this, I mean, days ago.
Yeah, well.
So, discussion? And roll call?
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Ross McKee, yes, passed. Now you'll be, she had the payment of bills, and then the purchase, the purchase order resolution.
It'll be a fourth purchase order. I move the last motion to approve the purchase order as presented. So I move, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Roll call?
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Ross McKee, yes.
Is there a motion to payment of bills as presented?
I move.
One second. Discussion? Discussion? Roll call?
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Ross McKee?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Right, I'm in executive session.
We're not going to, we're not having an executive session.
I didn't know what it was for, I asked correctly previously, what it was for, there's no answer, so I didn't know if it was something else.
We're not having an executive session tonight.
Question to the chairman?
Roll call?
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Ross McKee? I had this for the flat.